I'm Susan Verticchio. I serve as Chair. I'm joined by my colleagues Mario Golebov, Mike Betancourt, and Rich Mucci, and Acting Town Manager Beth Rudolph. And I do have an announcement, but I'll wait. I just wanted to mention that we do have a meeting coming up on Wednesday, where it's open to members of the public to talk about and ask questions and make comments about the proposed project at Waterfield and Swanton, and the Request for Proposals, or RFP, that we've been working on, still in draft form, and we wanted to give you all a chance to make comments and ask questions before it's finished. So that starts at 7:00, 7:30? When does that start, Patty? On Wednesday?
7:00 PM.
7:00 PM? Yes, it starts at 7:00 PM, it's 7:30 here. So 7:00 PM, January 12th, Wednesday night. And then we have our next public meeting would be our regular session is on January 24th, after this one, and then the two meetings in February are February 7th and February 28th. So this is the first meeting in January, and I'd like to do the land acknowledgement, please.
Yes, so we acknowledge that we're meeting on the ancestral homeland of the Massachusetts people, who lived here for thousands of years before European colonists began arriving about 1630. In the 1600s, the Massachusetts were led by the Sanskwa of Mesitequa, who led her people through epidemics, wars, and displacement. We acknowledge that Winchester exists within a region where lands were taken under unjust and violent circumstances, causing a forced relocation that continues to have harmful effects on native communities. As part of the town government of Winchester, we recognize our responsibility now to be good stewards of this land. And we acknowledge that Massachusetts, Wampanoag, and other indigenous people from across the country currently live in Winchester and throughout the state and contribute to our community in myriad ways.
Thank you. The thing I wanted to report on, or be sure you knew, is that in addition to all the stuff that we're doing, the EFPPC and the school committee are hard at work, working on a new replacement or a new building for the Lynch School. And they've been meeting tonight, starting ahead of us. But they also have put up a website for people to find out more about it and understand what all the decision points are. And the URL for it is www.lynch2025.com or .org. Lynch 2025 is pretty easy to remember. They encourage you to check that out. It's up and running. So I guess we would move into the acceptance of donations, please.
I move that we accept a donation of $715.87 to the Council on Aging for appreciation of services provided by the Council on Aging. With thanks to the Council on Aging.
Thank you.
Roll call vote, Rich?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Mariano?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well?
I move that we accept two ARPA stabilization grants to the Recreation Department, December disbursement, one in the amount of $16,333.33 to be used for the RAP Kid Connection, and the other in the amount of $5,633.33 to be used for the Lynch After-School Program.
Thank you.
Roll call vote, Rich?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Mariano?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. And we're up to the Town Manager's Report. Beth, are you ready?
I am, yep. Let me just share my screen here. Just a few updates tonight on non-agenda items. So the first one is, in mid-December, we sent out what we're calling kind of a last call for any ARPA funding requests from various town departments, boards, committees, and community organizations. All those proposals are due this Friday, January 14th. And then the board, I think, will probably discuss in a preliminary manner under meeting on January 24th, we'll have a summary available to you on what has been requested. The other thing I just wanted to mention was that the Treasury adopted the final rule in admitting the ARPA funding on January 6th, that the final rule takes effect on April 1st. And prior to that, we can use the funds in a manner consistent with the final rule, and they will not take action to enforce the final rule if the funds is consistent with that. So I know Stacy is going to be spending some time, lucky her, going through that to make sure we're, we'll be in compliance. Construction update, the MBTA held a meeting, a virtual public meeting on December 15th, where they discussed upcoming construction activities related to the Winchester Center Station reconstruction project. They've issued a notice of receipt to their contractor, and they expect to be starting precondition surveys and other preliminary construction activities early in 2022, with the construction to start probably in the early spring timeframe, would be my guess. So I'll keep the board updated as we hear more from them. Our outdoor dining applications were due on January 5th, and we received applications from six businesses. So staff is currently reviewing those, and the board will review those applications at your meeting on January 24th, along with any applications for the ABCC change to premises license as part of that. Quickly, as Susan mentioned, there's a lot going on with the Lynch School feasibility update. So EFPPC is meeting tonight to review the conceptual site plan options for the school. And then there's a series, I won't go through all of these, but there's kind of a timeline here laid out for the various milestones that will happen over the next year. The big one is debt exclusion override is proposed for early 2023. And then I'll skip right to the end here. Lynch School opens January 2025. So a lot happening to get to those two big milestones, but that's the overall schedule. And I hope that everybody will stay informed with the website that just went up to avail yourselves of the various information that will be available to the public about that project. Another couple important updates, the Northeast Metro Tech election related to the school rebuilding project is scheduled for Tuesday, January 25th, from 11:00 AM to 6:00 PM. That voting is at Town Hall in the room next to the Town Clerk's office. It's a requirement of the MSBA to have the election certified by February 3rd, which is why we're required to have the election on that day as are all other communities who are in the vocational school district. In order to be approved, the ballot question must pass by a majority of all votes cast in all member communities. So that's an important thing for people to know on your calendar. A couple of construction updates, I'm very, very, very happy to say that the Swan Street Bridge project is substantially complete, and the bridge was reopened right before the holidays, right before Christmas. National Grid has been working on Beacon Street. I think DPW is allowing them to work kind of weather-dependent. I think their runway has run out in terms of weather-dependent activities. So I think they'll probably be in a bit of a winter hiatus going forward. And then we have three very large bid projects up to bid right now. So we have the North Reservoir Dam Project, which has been in mid-December, and the bid opening is scheduled for February 1st. We have a Fire Department HVAC Project, which is currently out to bid, and that bid opening is February 17th. And then the Transpiration Improvement Project. So we just received our approval letter from Mass DEP on December 7th, and that project will be bid in early February with a bid opening on March 10th. And then finally, some COVID updates. So obviously, we are all in the midst of a very large surge, not just here in Massachusetts, but across the country with the Omicron variant. So we, Town Manager's Office, working with the schools, and the Health Department are trying to do everything we can in terms of testing and clinics going forward. So there are two, actually, one of them happened today. So the Board of Health, the Health Department, has committed to conducting two testing clinics every week. So the schedule this week was January 10th this afternoon, and then the next one is scheduled for Wednesday from 4:00 to 6:00 PM here at Town Hall in the auditorium. All fees are being waived for these upcoming clinics through the end of January. Typically, the testing was $20 per person for non-employees. The Health Department is also holding booster clinics on January 24th and 31st at the Jenks Center for ages 12-plus. And then we were able, last week and early this week, to put in our order for approximately 15,000 at-home test kits. We don't have an estimated shipment date yet, but I'm hopeful that we'll be able to get those and distribute them through the schools and the town to the various resources that we have available. And then finally, just two community updates. There's a Wednesday, January 26th, at 7:00 PM at the Griffin Museum, there's a presentation on understanding friendships applies to both kids and adults. And then there's a Martin Luther King Day Virtual Day of Service being held on Monday, January 17th, from 10:00 AM to 12:00 PM. Unfortunately, they've had to move this to Zoom because of the increase in COVID cases, but it should still be a great presentation and a great morning of activity. So I encourage everybody to attend that. And I think that's all I have. Happy to take any questions.
So does anyone have any questions for Beth on any of all of that? Okay, that sounds like not. Patty, is Stacy here to talk about her report?
No, she isn't, but everyone is here from the MBTA for the start of their hearing.
Okay, okay. So we'll go into that hearing then. So this is a hearing about some improvements, accessibility improvements and safety improvements that the MBTA wants to make along the bus line on Main Street. So Beth, you want to kick this off?
Sure. I think there's a few folks here from the MBTA and their consultants. So as Town Engineer myself and Town Planner Brian Sekely have been talking to this group for probably almost close to a year at this point. They've been, the MBTA has, as Susan said, a bus accessibility and ADA compliance project. So they're looking at some improvements to the bus stop near Bolino Park, and then also some improvements on Cambridge Street, which is not a town road, it's a massed-out road, but we did want to include that just as an update for everybody so that everybody's aware of the changes that are going to be happening there. So with that, I'll turn it over. I'm not sure who's leading off from the MBTA. So I'll turn it over to whoever wants to take it from here. Thanks.
Yeah, hi everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Yeah. You are able to share, and Hugh is in the audience. Was he going to attend? I've been trying to promote him to panelist.
Yeah, Jackie.
Hugh doesn't need to share. I'll share my screen, and that's fine. He can IM me if there's any questions or points he'd like to add.
Everybody. Okay, can everyone see the screen right now?
Yes, I can.
Yes, we can, Ben.
Okay. Good evening, Susan, and all the community board members. So my name is Ben Zhu, a project manager from MBTA. So we're very happy to be here to introduce a Patty project that we will plan to do in Winchester. So right now, let me first to introduce the purpose of the plan for the Accessibility Transit Infrastructure Patty Project. It's a great ADA-compliant bus stop for our customers who have a different mobility needs needed. So since 1990, so all municipalities and agencies are required to upgrade their pedestrian infrastructure to meet ADA requirement. So the disability advocate brought a lawsuit against MBTA to provide ADA compliance to mass transit across our whole systems. So improve the bus stop system-wide is a part of the settlement agreement. So this project includes the improvement to the sidewalks, the creation of the crosswalk, ADA compliant curb ramps, and bus stop signs. So all of the work within public right away. And the MBTA has submitted plans to Town of Winchester for review and approval during the design process. So today, we want to introduce 30% of what we already did. So the bus stop in Winchester has been the priority for the construction in 2022 due to one of more major access barriers as well as relative needed. So there are four bus stops in the Town of Winchester that plans to accessibility improvement. And two stops we are planning to be eliminated due to the stop consolidations. So the MBTA is funded by Fair and State Fund and the Federal Transit Agency to perform the work. So we estimate we investment more than 1,000, 100,000 in the Town of Winchester. So right now, I want to take it over to our design team. So HDR engineers, project manager J.K. Davis, to give us more information for each stops for plans. And then we are very happy to, in the end, to answer any question if you guys have. Jackie, please.
Yes, thanks, Ben. Good evening to the Select Board. So tonight, we'll be presenting two stops. The two stops, the first one, as Beth mentioned, is Cambridge at Foxcroft. And the second is Main Street at Richardson. Both of these stops will have bus stop relocations in addition to new curb ramps and crosswalks. And I'll go through the specifics at each location. So as Beth mentioned, this is a mastod owned roadway Cambridge Street. So I'll explain just a little bit what's going on here, and then I'll show another photo to help to help everyone understand the design plan a little bit better. So in the top right, you'll see the existing inbound stop at Cambridge and Blossom Hill Road. So this stop will be retained in the final condition as well. The one improvement that you will see out here is a proposed level landing area. So a portion of that grass buffer will be removed and replaced with concrete. So the purpose of this level landing area is ideally an eight-foot by 10-foot level area that will allow the MBTA bus to fully deploy its accessible ramps. And then the second, the middle photo, is the far side stop across, is the stop across the street, which is currently on the near side, which will be relocating to the far side of Foxcroft Road, which you can see in the bottom picture. So it'll be right in front of that white fence. So the same will happen there. We'll be improving that sidewalk in addition to removing a portion of that grass buffer. And to give you a high overview, the aerial doesn't line up 100%, but the areas that are gray will be improved as part of this project, with the yellow being the detectable warning panels, and the bright green areas where we'll be replacing the loman seed that's currently out there. So the second stop is, we're proposing it at Main Street and Richardson. As Beth mentioned, we worked with Beth and Brian over the last year to review alternative locations for these two stops. So we did look at maintaining the stop at, the inbound stop at Canal and Main Street, and moving the outbound stop also across from Canal Street, in addition to moving both stops to the intersection of Main Street and Swanton Street. And the option that we'll be presenting tonight is maintaining the outbound stop at Bolino Park and adding the inbound stop across the street at Richardson Street. So the top-right photo again is the existing stop at Canal Street, which will be moving in front of the Dairy Barn. I'll show it on the next page, but there will be a driveway that will need to be closed at the Dairy Barn. And then it will be improving the existing stop at the park. So you'll be able to see it a little bit better in this photo on the north side of the road at the park. The lighter gray shows that will be, that will all be proposed to make concrete, with the darker gray will be in the HMA to match the existing park. We'll add the crosswalk across Main Street and an additional ramp on the south side of the roadway. And in front of Mr. Terzakis's property, you'll see that the first driveway closest to the pedestrian ramp, we're asking if we can close that to help facilitate the level landing and the clear zone area. So the clear zone area is the area that allows the back doors of the bus to open, and that area is usually eight feet by five feet. But we will be maintaining the second driveway on the property, and then the full curb cut on Richardson Street. So the two stops that we will be eliminating tonight are both stops at Cambridge and Oneida Road. So HDR has worked with the MBTA and their service planning group, and we've done a cluster analysis to review all of the stops in and along these bus routes. So we found that the average ridership for these two stops were about two riders per day. And that the closest stop to Oneida Street was about 400 feet away. And that was either to the Foxcroft intersection that we're improving or to the intersection at Cambridge and Church. So these are two stops that we have proposed to eliminate. So moving forward, we'll take any comments from tonight's meeting and follow up with Beth and Brian to see if they have any additional comments on the 30% design plans. Once we have comments from the 30% plans, those plans will be sent to all the affected abutters for these properties. And once, they'll have two weeks to review, comment, and reply. And we'll try to issue 100% design package back to the city. Probably, it says February, but we're hoping between February and March. And we'll work with the engineering group, see if there's any permitting applications that our on-call contractor will have to complete. But we're hoping for construction in April once the weather is a little bit nicer and the moratorium's over. So with that, I guess we can take any questions?
Great, thank you. Are there any questions from the board on any of these stops? Either the eliminations or the work that they're proposing to do?
Yeah, Susan, I have a few questions.
Go ahead.
So on the first one that you presented on Foxcroft and Cambridge, one concern is the crosswalk that is being added across Cambridge, being at an angle like that. It makes the crosswalk a lot longer, and it makes it harder for pedestrians to have a good view of cars coming very fast on Cambridge Street. So I was wondering if it was possible to put the crosswalk on the west side of Foxcroft Road? If that's not possible, the way that it's configured now, I'm also questioning why the bus stop on the outbound side is, has been moved to the outside of Foxcroft Road. So now somebody getting off and having to cross Cambridge Street now has to cross two streets, whereas if it was kept on the east side of Foxcroft, they would only have to cross one crosswalk. So, you know, I would think we would want to minimize how many streets somebody has to cross. And the other one is Cambridge Street is a very high-speed street. So I would encourage you, if possible, to put rapid flashing beacons on any crosswalk across Cambridge Street. I also had questions on the other one on Main Street, but I don't know if we want to break them up, or we talk about this one first and then the one on Main Street.
Yeah, that's a perfect. Jackie, could you answer the first question from the Moreno?
Sure. Michael, was your question also about Cambridge at Foxcroft?
Yeah, actually, pretty similar to Mariano. And one of the things that we've been doing in Winchester is really trying to shrink the size of crosswalks, especially on very busy streets like that. So to Mariano's point, the same kind of thing. If we can avoid a long angled crosswalk like that, I think it would be helpful. Even if we bump it out, I think it will, you know, slow some traffic that's at very high speed. And you see, the intersections were designed with very wide turns as well. And so that creates a lot of high-speed situations as well. So, and I forget whether Foxcroft is one-way at that point. I don't really remember, but
It's not.
Okay, okay. But my points were similar to Mariano, so, and for the next one as well. So just adding that in. Thank you.
All right, yeah, so for the bump outs, that's something that we will have to run by DOT since they own Cambridge Street. But for the southwest corner, we can look at maybe making that an apex ramp and trying to align that crosswalk a little bit better. And we can work with the Engineering Department to see if we can tighten up that turn, run some turning templates to see if it can be a little tighter. But to answer Mariano's first question about why the crosswalk was moved, or why the stop was moved to the opposite side of Foxcroft. So ideally, the bus stops after the pedestrian crossing to reduce conflicts with pedestrians and with right-term vehicles. So that was one of the safety improvements that we saw here.
Okay, thank you. Would you be able to install rapid flashing beacons? Because honestly, I'm very concerned about any crosswalks on Cambridge Street that are unsignaled, because they do give a false sense of security. There's a lot of kids that cross Cambridge Street to get to school. And I think a crosswalk gives a false sense of security that they can step on it, and cars will stop, and cars are going 45, 55 miles an hour down Cambridge with very low visibility. So any possibly, any additional signaling would be helpful.
Definitely. If we could get something in writing requesting that, we can revise the plans and include that in the submission to DOT to show that this is additional work that is supported by you, since they'll be the ones reviewing and approving if the RFP can be installed. And eventually, they'll have to, since they own the road, they'll be the ones that have to maintain it.
That sounds good. I have the same, this is Susan. I have the same concern about kids crossing Cambridge, especially, you know, during rush hour, or when, you know, when there is lots of traffic, when they're going to and from school or other activities.
Yeah, if it's something the town supports, then we can include it in the plans and hope that DOT supports it as well.
Thank you, great.
I guess along the same lines, I share my colleague's concerns. Is there a reason why we're not trying to locate this stop closer to one of our signal lights on Cambridge Street? Whether it's Church and Cambridge or?
There's already a stop at Church and Cambridge. So on this stop, on this stretch, there's a stop at Church and Cambridge. 200 feet to the west is the stop at Oneida, and another 200 or 400 feet is this stop here.
Right. I just have concerns, like Mariano, that, you know, crossing Church Street, even with a rapid flashing beacon, I have concerns as well. I don't, I don't know. Hopefully, that gets people's attention, but I just.
Yeah, Rich, I'm thinking, I'm thinking we can talk to the Mass DOT to request the actual, you know, lighting, so in case, to help the kids cross the walk safely. So we will be responding to you maybe later about this after we have confirmation with the Mass DOT.
Okay.
Anyone else or any other intersections or stops that you want to talk about? My board members?
So the one on Main Street, is there any action from the town regarding the Terzakis property that you need?
So I have tried to reach out to Mr. Shizaki. We, Hugh and I were out there on Thursday trying to meet with him, but we haven't been able to reach him to show him these plans. So once the town approves these plans, then we will send them to all the abutters and hope that he signs off on it, as well as the town endorsing the plans, and then allowing the MBTA access to do work within the And then allowing the MBTA access to do work within that park area.
The abutters were notified of tonight's hearing. I'm not sure if, um, that that abutter is in attendance, but it might be worth taking their comments. That was a concern that Brandon and I had in reviewing this, um, because it is. Right now, there's a very large curb cut, almost the entire length of that frontage is, is a curb cut. But we did want to get the abutters feedback on that. I don't, I, because they do have other ways in and out of the property, I don't necessarily think it's an issue for circulation. But I just wanted to make sure we heard from the abutter before, um, you know, I just, a final plan was developed.
The abutter with this raised hand is for Foxcroft.
Well, I was gonna, I was gonna go to open it up to members of the public. And I do see that, um, Mr. Skipalidi, if I pronounced that correctly, has his hand raised.
And I've moved him in.
Okay.
Hi, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Hi, uh, my name is Bernie Skipalidi. And I'm, I'm commenting on the Cambridge at Foxcroft improvements. I, I live actually right at that intersection. My name is on the plan. I am on the southeast corner, right where the current bus stop is located. The outbound bus stop is currently located. I have a couple of comments more, more than anything. But before I do comment, I just want you to understand that, um, I worked a little over 32 years for the town of Burlington, uh, as a police officer. And 20 of those years, I was actually the town's traffic safety officer. So I was very familiar with site plans, um, roadway improvements, um, all, anything that happened in Burlington. Pretty much from 1998 to 2018, I reviewed. So I was, um, anticipating this. I knew this was coming and, and I took a look at the plans already. And I just have a couple of comments. Coming down Blossom Hill, the, um, the radius, somebody already mentioned is set up for wide turns. And that's problematic the way it is now currently, even if no improvements are made. Because the stop sign sits so far back that people come all the way out to Cambridge Street without slowing down or stopping. And, um, and there are quite a few crashes as a result of that. I purchased this house in 1991, so I, I've been here and, and seen it daily. Not crashes daily, I don't mean to say that. But, but one of the problems is that that stop sign sits so far back. So I understand it's an MBTA project. I understand that it's a state road. But I think the town should work with tightening up that intersection. It should all be done in conjunction. And that would also alleviate one of the selectmen's concerns about that being a longer crosswalk. If that can be, um, if the intersection can be tightened up and the corner brought out, that allows that crosswalk to be maybe at a less of a slant. And it shortens it for the distance or time people across in the street. So that was, that was one of my first comments. I don't know if I should kind of give them all or just let you just.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, that's fine.
The other, um, comment that I was thinking about prior to the meeting starting and a few have come up since. Is on the outbound side, uh, exiting Foxcroft. So at the stop sign, Foxcroft onto Cambridge, there's been a low-level gas leak there for about six or seven years. The gas company's been out numerous times. I've talked to the techs out there. And they tell me that the leak just isn't bad enough to address yet. And then when it becomes a bad leak, that, you know, it'll move up the priority and it will get done. Might be something that the town wants to speak to the gas company about. Because if it's going to involve digging up that area, it'd hate to put all this time and effort into it. And then, and have them ruin or dig up, you know, a new bus stop, uh, an area that, that was just done. So, um, you know, like I said, I, I know it's a coordination of different people. But, you know, just living here, it's, it's something that I know. One of the selectmen did mention, um, beacons. I understand how they work. Um, it, it's, it's, I, I hate to say it's like crosswalks. People don't use them. People are afraid to use them and, and I know, um, they work and, and they're there for safety. So as much as I'm not a fan of them in front of my house, um, I do understand, you know, safety is the priority. And, and we'll, we'll move along with the town with whatever they do. But for the same reason, I'm not a fan of bus stops on, on corners. Because any car that is exiting the side streets when the bus is stopped, um, has a blind, um, blind vision to one direction or the other. So it's better that they're moving the inbound one up a little bit because it gets it out of the intersection of Blossom Hill. But somebody taking a left out of Blossom Hill for a short time has their view blocked to the right. Same thing pulling out of Foxcroft, either in its new position or old position would have a problem. Again, at short term, it's only when the bus is there, but their vision is blocked. So I know somebody else mentioned, uh, there are other bus stops around. I think the ones there, the one they're deleting is on a straightaway. I think, I'm not too sure, down at 125. But, um, these were just some things I wanted to bring up, just to let people know, you know, I live in the area. And I understand the plan and appreciate the time and effort that's been put into it by the T, by the state, by the town. I appreciate the notices and things that have gone out. But just what kind of my experience, a few things that I noted that might make it a little safer as well.
Yeah, thank you. Those, those are very useful comments. And, um, I'm just wondering if with all these different people involved, if there's, if there is some way to. Get in touch with the gas company and make them aware that all this work is going to be done. And it'd be great to coordinate with, with, uh. You know, MBTA and, and, uh, Mast dot, that owns this road. It'd be great, yeah.
Susan, can I just ask a question? How was it decided to eliminate the other stops and, and put the stop here at this? You know, what I would say is a pretty busy intersection, um, on Cambridge Street.
So the cluster analysis looks at riders per day, uh, location and proximity to other stops, uh, within the line. So, um, I don't have the exact numbers pulled up, but I can send the cluster analysis. I think, um, Oneida was eliminated that had the least riders. Those buses stopped inbound and outbound approximately two times today. Where at this intersection here, they stop about three or four.
I mean, they're all so close together and I can appreciate, you know, no one wants to walk a little further. But if it's safety is the issue, I mean, it just seems like a lot of action for this. You know, I would consider a pretty busy intersection, um, you know, because of bus stops maybe once or twice more a day. You know, it's, it seems like they're negligible numbers.
So the goal of Patty's accessibility. So, um, someone that does have some sort of, um, if it's visual impairment or some sort of disability. It's trying to keep these stops within, um, like ideally, it would be about a half, less than a half a mile. A five-minute walk, something that's not outrageous. And that their route to and from is accessible and they're easily able to access these stops and the crossings around them.
I can certainly, I can certainly appreciate that. But if that's the goal here, this is a pretty hard. You know, area for someone with, you know, I think accessibility issues to navigate Cambridge Street, you know, with this safety layout. I mean, I think, that's just my personal opinion. I mean, there's, I mean, it's a very, very dangerous street to begin with. So, I mean, I need to try to make it safer with, I don't even think a flash of light's gonna work. I mean, Rich, just from, um, you know, this is my, my neighborhood. And, uh, there, there are a lot of people that come down Blossom Hill to take that, uh, stop and people from Foxcroft. And, um, to go to Oneida, there are no sidewalks, right? So to go to the closest, uh, stop, there are no sidewalks. Whereas for somebody who currently takes the bus out of Oneida, there is a sidewalk to get to Church Street. And it's a much shorter walk, um, to Church Street from Oneida than it would be from, uh, Foxcroft, Blossom Hill. To either Oneida or to Wildwood, which is the next stop of the 350. And there is no sidewalk to either one of those. Okay, thank you for clarifying.
I see a hand raised, uh, let's see, Sally Dale? Can we elevate Sally Dale? I guess we're working on it.
Susan, can I ask a quick question, um, while Sally's being brought in? So I was just looking, um, on the street view, um, as you turn, take a right on Cambridge Street, um, from Blossom Hill. It looks like there might be the possibility to, and I, I'm throwing this out as an idea for the MBTA. I'm not sure if it's possible. But if you shifted the bus stop further down, and I don't think there's any curb cuts or anything, so I don't, I think you would be able to do that. You might be able to get this, um, instead of having the crosswalk at an angle from Blossom Hill over to Foxcroft. You might be able to move the crosswalk, um, further so you could do a perpendicular crosswalk, um, kind of straight across. On Cambridge Street, that wouldn't necessarily be at the corner of Foxcroft, but, but would be straight across. So it would hit Foxcroft kind of between the, the driveway opening, um, for that first house on Cambridge Street and Foxcroft. So that might be something to look at to eliminate that, um, angled crosswalk.
Thanks.
Alright, is, um, Sally, are you there?
Yes, I'm right here and I can start my picture.
Yes, please go ahead.
Great, so, um, I live actually three houses away from Foxcroft Road. Just going outbound on Cambridge Street. And so for all the years that I worked, I took this bus stop right here at Foxcroft to go inbound. And I got off at the bu- the bus stop, um, right there before Foxcroft, at the officer's house. And, um, I'm very happy that you're paying attention to this intersection because it's very dangerous for crossing. One of the things that has to be done is to, um, and you've spoken of it like six times, narrow or, uh, reduce the radius. Of these corners and make, and move up the stop bars where you can actually see. The second thing is that, um, there is a really bad gas leak there as, um, the officer mentioned. And it's been, uh, really detectable and noticeably strong for quite a while. And I've reported it many times. So I'm concerned that they said that it's not bad enough to address. I think that it will come up because it's involved with this area right here and I'm grateful for that. The other thing is somebody mentioned the word straightaway. And I know when I get off, um, when I'm, when I'm crossing, uh, Cambridge Street from Blossom Hill. I, there's a straightaway that if you go north on Cambridge Street, outside the view of this, um, photograph. To the left of this photo, there's a really good straightaway that for crossing. And it would disentangle it from this intersection altogether. But I still would like to have this intersection fixed. So, um, we'd have, it would involve installing a sidewalk and, um, but take it out of the intersection and move it to the north. That's on the inbound side. And on the outbound side, I agree with the speaker who said that it's really dangerous to have a bus stopping so close to. On blocking the view of people exiting a Foxcroft. And that should be moved to the north also. And that's what I think. Did you get that?
Yes, I heard, I heard that. I, I don't know if there's any reaction.
No, I just, those, I'm just putting that feedback.
Yeah.
Oh, and the other point is there's a fire hydrant right there. Um, you can't see it underneath the green bar, but on the northbound side, just north of Foxcroft. Yeah, and actually the sidewalk's subsiding there anyway, so it's kind of a mess. So, that's all I have.
Thank you, Sally. Anyone else? I don't see any hands raised. I'm gonna close the hearing. Beth, anything further that we need to do?
No, I, I just, I think you, if we're okay with the concept of the closing up of the curb cut, um, at that corner at Richardson. That might be something.
Do, do you need the board to take some action? I'm gonna cough, sorry.
I think we lost Beth. We lost Beth, Susan.
No, you didn't. I'm just moving her around. She's coming back in.
Okay. The wonders of Zoom.
Yeah, Sally was right with her.
I got demoted for a minute. So I don't know, um, if, if you wanna, if you wanna kind of give the sense to the board if that's something, um, you're okay with in concept. Subject to discussions with that abutter. And then I don't know, um, Jack, and if it'd be helpful for the board to vote the request specifically about the rapid flashing beacons. If that would give our request a little bit more credence when you go in front of Mast dot.
Yes, anything that would help support it, that we could send the documentation to DOT, uh, with our permit package.
And so, um, I move that we request Mas DOT and the MBTA to install a rapid flashing, uh, beacon. On any crosswalk that they install on, uh, across Cambridge Street. And, um, do we need to vote on something also for Main Street on the curb cut?
I mean, I think it's just a sense of the board of if you're okay with the concept of that, us moving forward, I think it was, would be important.
So I'll leave the motion as is then.
There's a motion.
Second?
And the second, and we'll do a roll call vote. Rich?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Mariano?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. And then sense of the board about this, uh, Richardson and, uh, driveways and curb cut. In front of Dairy Barn, but for that abutter there, I, I, I think that makes sense.
I mean, I mean, in principle, I think it makes it safer to not have that huge curb cut, a curb cut on Main Street where there's a lot of traffic. So I, I'm fine, but I would, I would like to hear what the, what the property owner has to say.
Yes.
About it, but eh, eh, I, I'm, I'm fine with it. And I think it, it does make it safer for Main Street.
Anyone else on the board?
I agree with that.
Yes.
Great, okay. Yeah, so that's, that's the sense of the board. And I see that Ben Keeler has his hand raised. I know he's on, uh, T-Tech. So I'm sure he would have something to contribute if we can elevate him. Before we leave this topic.
Okay, he's in.
Hi, good evening. Thanks for, uh, taking the time. I appreciate you guys, uh, going over these issues and everyone's comments. I, I don't want to take up, uh, too much of your time because I do know that this, um, specific hearing was, um, specifically for, for Mast dot. And, uh, Cambridge Street and Main Street, you know, fall into a different jurisdiction. We just, we, uh, just had a, a T-Tech meeting not too long ago, uh, wrap up. And I just wanted to use the opportunity to, um, you know, just make sure that the board knew that there, there are a few. Sidewalk, uh, related requests that are, uh, that have been approved by the town. And, and specifically this board, uh, that haven't gotten a lot of traction yet. Jay reported back that, uh, that there was some, uh, movement on, uh, sidewalk at Hillcrest. And Highland, um, and then there's also been a request and he just approved, uh, sidewalk at Swanton. Between, uh, the, uh, the elder care facilities. And, uh, obviously given that we're getting to, you know, hopefully to the other side of, um, construction on Swanton. I just wanted to make sure that while we were talking about sidewalks, we use the opportunity to, uh, to raise it to this board. There are a few of those, um, key sidewalks that, uh, really would be, uh, that are, you know, the, the town's. Specific responsibility that you guys have approved that, you know, we would love to see, uh, implemented, um, you know, as soon as possible.
Okay, thank you, Ben.
Thank you.
So if there's nothing further, I, I think we can move on. And thank you to all of the, uh, Mast dot people and, uh. Yep, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Really good improvements. So I think next we have a couple of licenses.
Yes, so you have a change of manager at the American Civic Association doing business as Sons of Italy to Mark Frangello. I don't think, I don't think he was gonna be here, right? A few more people just dropped out of the.
Let me just bring him back in.
I don't think anybody wants just Rich and I running the show, so.
What did I kick out Susan, too? Oh, my goodness.
Trigger happy tonight, Patty.
Yes, I am. Sorry about that. There, there she is. Okay. I know. And then Mariano. There we go.
It's just so we can keep, keep hearing that recording and.
Exactly. Well, basically what happened is that when she stopped sharing, it moved you guys around right when I was moving people out.
I thought I was gonna, I thought I was gonna be able to call it an early night.
You can't get off that easy.
All right, so let me know when you're all, if everything's back to normal. I think it is.
Everybody's here.
Okay, so we were discussing the change of manager at the American Civic Association or the Sons of Italy. And I don't know if Mr. Frangello is here. It would be nice.
He is not.
If he is, because everything is, is in order, and I think this is, you know, this is all final and ready, ready to go.
All right, so I move that we approve the change of manager at the American Civic Association doing business as Sons of Italy at 117 Swanton Street Winchester, with the new manager being Mark Frangello.
Roll call vote. Mike?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Mariano?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well.
Do we have anybody here for the other licenses?
I don't know.
No, those, those are all just the renewals that, the people who hadn't gotten theirs in time for the December.
So I move that we approve the license renewals for Common Victroler, for Frozen Hoagies, Rylock Farm, Gloria's Pizzeria, and that we approved a license renewal for temporary mooring license for the Winchester Boat Club.
Same.
And a roll call vote. Rich?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Mariano?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. And that brings us down to our business agenda. And the first thing we have here is a proposal for a 40B for some development at 87 through 89 Cross Street.
So I'm moving Brian in along with Mario. Oh, okay.
Yep. I see Paul Haverty. Might be the attorney. Name looks familiar.
Madam Chair.
So it looks like we have everybody. Welcome Mario Covino and Paul Haverty and Brian Zakelli, Park Town Planner.
Thank you.
So we've gotten some materials and some drawings. Thank you. And, you know, anything you want to present and explain, please go ahead.
Madam Chair, my name is Paul Haverty. I'm an attorney with Blatman, Bobrovsky and Haverty in Concord, Massachusetts. I'm here tonight on behalf of my client Mario Covino regarding his property located at 87 to 89 Cross Street. We are seeking preliminary indication of support from the Select Board for a nine-unit rental affordable housing development on the property pursuant to the local initiative program, which is sponsored by the Department of Housing and Community Development. So the LIP program, which is frequently referred to as a friendly 40B development, is an eligible subsidy program pursuant to General Laws, Chapter 40B, Sections 20 to 23. The LIP program is one of many different subsidy programs that a developer can choose to use when it's seeking comprehensive permit. Alternative programs include the New England Fund, which is overseen by Mass Housing, and there are also programs through Mass Housing Partnership or Mass Development. The benefit to the town in supporting a LIP develop, a LIP project is it gives a greater level of participation and sort of control over the process than if the applicant uses one of the other different subsidy programs. Because DHCD will not grant a project eligibility letter under the LIP program without a letter of support from the town. The, the project will still remain subject to the standard requirements for 40B developments, including the affordability requirements and the profit limitations. The applicant proposes that two of the nine proposed units will be affordable to households earning not more than 50% of area median income. So pursuant to the Chapter 40B requirements, a rental development must, must either contain 25% of the units affordable at 80% of area median income, or 20% of the units affordable priced at 50% of area median income. So we're proposing to do the latter, having nine of, I'm sorry, two of the nine units affordable, which exceeds 20%. We have provided copies of proposed site plan showing the layout of the proposed nine townhouse units. Each unit is proposed to have three bedrooms, and a minimum of two parking spaces per unit will be provided, plus additional excess spaces are also proposed. At this point, really all we're looking for is some feedback from the Select Board as to whether they think that this is the type of a concept that could be supported, giving us sort of the sense that it makes sense for us to move forward with a LIP application rather than choosing one of the other avenues that are available. I'm happy to answer any questions that the board has.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from any of the board members? Mike?
Thank you, Susan. Thank you, Mr. Haverty. It sounds like a great project from my perspective. Typically with a LIP, the DHCD requires the town to contribute as well in some way beyond just zoning relief. So I don't know if that's a conversation that we can have as well about what the project would be, and the applicant would be looking for from us for this partnership, just so we can, you know, engage with you along the way.
I'll defer to Mario in terms of what sort of assistance he may be looking for from the town. I, I know that when you, when an applicant is proposing low-income housing tax credit projects through DHCD, they do look for some sort of a financial commitment from a municipality. I, I don't think that that's the case when you're talking about simply a LIP, Local Action Program project. So I don't think that we're necessarily looking for any sort of financial commitment from the town.
And I didn't mean necessarily even just financial, but any, any sort of assistance beyond just the relief. But, and it doesn't have to be something that we discuss now, but down the road, just I was seeing if there was anything, anything else that you were looking for. But as I said, it sounds like a great opportunity from my perspective, especially at the lower affordability level there. So, thank you.
Anyone else? Mariano?
Yeah, so, yeah, I wanted to, you know, the, the same comment that Mike had, the affordability level is something that gives a diversity of, of options that, you know, a lot of the other affordable housing in town is at the 80% level. So I think that having something that is at the 50% level is, is, is good, and it gives us something that, that is not elsewhere. I saw in your note that you might need some relief from setback on the front. So I would like to get a little bit more detail, you know, how much of is of that, with the caveat that I, I think that a relief of setback in the front is a lot more acceptable than on the side or the back, especially on the back where it, it would impact residential. Whereas in the front, it's, it's most, as far as I can see on Cross Street, there is, is all commercial, and there's, there's no residential on either side. So, so I'm, I'm okay with the front, just as long as it's not, you know, zero fee of setback.
Could I take that?
Yes.
Rest of your conversation with the building commissioner? I, I had a conversation with Al in, in the GBD district. There's no setback requirement for the front. So that was a, a mistake that I made early on. But Al Wild said that there was no setback requirement for, in that district.
Okay. But there is a setback with regards to the residential behind it. There's, there's a couple of houses on Forest Street that.
Correct, but the, the project sits in, is conforming with the setback all around.
Okay.
So it, everything conforms as far as the setback goes.
Okay, thank you.
Rich, anything you would like to ask or need clarification on?
Thank you, Susan. You know, I agree with my colleagues. I mean, this does sound like a potentially good project. You know, I think I'd be curious to hear from the neighborhood. I know it's commercial in that area, but still, I'd like just, you know, receive that feedback and maybe, you know, if this is to move forward, some type of hearing to give the opportunity to the public to be heard before, not too long.
Yeah, Brian, do we have some, some guidelines or requirements that we, that the board has, has used in the past? This is kind of, it's been a while.
Yeah, I've been, wanted to interject a few times, but I, because I was gonna answer some questions that people had had. So there is a, there is a, a policy that was voted on by the Select Board in, let me get the date right, January of 2021, actually a year ago tomorrow, January 11th. And the process overview talks about several different things. So the first step after this initial step, which is, which is a developer approaching the town with a concept for a specific site, we would then have a high-level conceptual design that would be shared with the public in, at a neighborhood meeting. So that, that would really be kind of the next step. And then after that neighborhood meeting, we would then initiate DHCD for a joint application. The last thing that I'll mention here is that the town does have an official contribution policy for all friendly 40Bs. The town, and I'm just reading off the policy, and I can share this with everybody. My, I guess this did not end up in the packets. So it says the town is willing to pay for 50% or up to $10,000 for each of three outside consultants. Funding levels are at the discretion of the Select Board with input from staff. And additionally, the town is willing to waive the building permit fees associated with the affordable units. So those are the two policies that the Select Board voted to be as, as official policies for friendly 40Bs January of last year. So those are the two general contributions that the town would entertain. This was after several sit downs with DHCD. This was not something that just the town of Winchester came up with and said, I think we'll do this. These were approved by DHCD because they requested it of us, and we, this is, this was the end result of, of those conversations.
Right, okay.
And I guess the only, the last thing I'll say is that we didn't really look at the zoning map, but just so everyone's aware, the front portion of this parcel is GBD1. Just like Washington and Swanton, there is about seven or eight parcels in all of town that are GBD1. This is one of them. The back portion of the parcel is, is RG 6.5. So it's the, so they, by right, they could build the, they could rebuild the duplex where they're at. By special permit, they could expand, expand the duplex, you know, make a larger duplex but can't create any more units. And that's kind of the issue that they were having, is that it's a very large lot, and the applicant didn't want to, to do a duplex. And they would instead provide much-needed affordable housing in a great location.
Right, okay.
Thank you.
So have I, have I called on everybody? I have a couple of thoughts myself. You know, it is a very large lot. I'm just a little concerned about the back part of it, abutting homeowners, and whether there's enough room, you know, for some screenings, some landscaping, also for the people living in those, those units. And just, if I could ask you to clarify, you're, you're thinking of these as, they're, they're ownership units, they're condominiums, that's not rental? Is that correct?
I believe we're gonna do resident, apartment rentals, not condos.
Oh.
Correct.
Okay.
So the, the program that allows you to do 20% at 50, 50% median income is only applicable to rental developments. It's not applicable to homeownership.
Okay. It's a new one for me, so that's, that's helpful. Thank you. And then the only other question I had is that, you know, they're, they're all three-bedroom units. Looks like you have a bedroom pretty, pretty much over the garage. And, I don't know. A little concerned about emissions or any kind of health risks to people sleeping above the garage. But, you know, I guess that can, something that can be looked at by a consultant or, you know, looked at further.
Also, very quickly, bedroom layout is also reviewed by DHCD. So not just health and safety, but, you know, they might have, they certainly would be excited that these units would be for families. That is one of the big things DHCD is trying to do. It's a question of whether or not something that is all three bedrooms, you know, that would still need to pass DHCD's guidelines as well. And that, that's where, once we talk about, once we talk with the neighborhood, we can then approach DHCD with, with more comments. So all the bedroom layouts that would still have to be approved, not just reviewed, but actually approved by DHCD as well.
Sounds good, yep.
Brian, a quick question. Do all nine units count towards SHI then, even though it's only 20%?
So, yes, I believe so. For this, again, like Mr. Haverty said, the fact that it's all rental and the fact that it's 50% at 20, 50% of AMI for the 20% of the units, that does, it's, it's the equivalent of 25% of the units at 80 AMI. It's like just another way to, to do that. So for all the units to count.
Okay.
And I should have mentioned that in my intro. They, they definitely do get to count all of these.
Yeah, thanks.
Okay. That sounds good. So, again, I guess the next step is to.
Commitment to the next neighborhood meeting, to a neighborhood meeting to get, you know, public feedback and go from, that, that would be step one, is a neighborhood feedback meeting.
I mean, I, yeah, I, I think the sense, to me, the sense of the board is, is that we support this. It is good to have more affordable housing, especially addressing this income level, and this is a pretty large lot, and it would be one that could accommodate that.
Right, thank you very much.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Good night.
Thanks.
I'm now seeing out of the corner of my eye that Diab Jerius has his hand raised. He's with the planning board, but you have the planning board. Probably should have called on him. Yep, before everybody disappears, you, you wanna have, you wanna talk to us, you have anything to add?
Oh, hi.
Yeah.
Thanks for letting me in. So one of, do you have a, a copy of the plans that you could display? Because there are a couple of points I'd like to make about the layout, if possible.
I, I don't know if Beth could do that?
Um, I have them. I just don't think I can put my hands on them.
Um, I have them, I just don't think I can put my hands on them.
Okay, well, one of the things I noted is it looks like the units are all townhouses. And so my concern is whether or not you can get an accessible unit in there, which might require that you do, you know, like a one over one flat for some of the units. Because I think we do also need accessible units in town. My other concern was that there seems to be an awful lot of asphalt in the front of the building. You have a, a long driveway which has to reach and go down the length of the property to get to the units which are in the back. And so I wonder, I don't know what is possible, but there, it's, it's, it's not a very green looking front. Thank you for putting that up, Beth. So if there is some way of doing something with the landscaping, changing where the garages are or anything like that, I mean, right now, it just, if I were a resident, I would be a little unhappy with the amount of green space out my front door, because there is none. So those are my two comments, accessibility and the front layout. Thank you.
Mario, did you want to address that at all?
This is, this is just a concept. You know, there's going to be a lot more landscaping involved, screening. There's a driveway that's existing there now that goes all the way back into the back property. But there will be a lot more landscaping done here if this happens.
Okay, and maybe some of those pavers rather than all blacked out, but again, that's, it's kind of a refinement that you could
Yep.
Okay. Is that it, Diab?
Yep, that's it, just accessibility and green space.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, good night. So that brings us to Washington and Swanton. And I'm sorry for being so late. Everything always takes longer than you think. This is the, the opportunity for the board to hear from other committees and, and boards in this, in this space. And this is the Affordable Housing Project at the corner of Washington and Swanton, where the town has taken by an eminent domain, a deteriorating commercial area, but one that used to be kind of the highlight of the neighborhood. Trying to revitalize it. And correctly if I'm wrong, I think we have four boards and committees that are going to present. And then at the end of all of those, we would open it up for questions from board members. And then on Wednesday is a chance for those members of the public individuals to, to speak and ask questions and present their views on this. So Beth, do you want to kind of take over and be sure that we're recognizing the right people and getting everybody, letting them share screens if they need to? I don't, I don't think there are any slides, but.
Yeah, so I just wanted to mention a couple of things before we get into comments.
Right.
There was a working group convened in late 2020, early 21. I was not involved with that at the time as, as town engineer, but there were several staff involved as well as variety of boards, committees and general public. And so those, that, that group worked with the town's consultant, Jim Goldson, to put together a draft RFP. And that process was very well, fairly well along in early 2020, 2021, excuse me. And so after the town meeting vote in November and after the board took the property, December, we quickly distributed basically a draft of that RFP, basically where the working group left off with a few changes that reflected the vote of town meeting, which included two conditions. One was to consider price as part of the RFP. And the other one was that all units created on the property had to be included in the subsidized housing inventory. So that, that changes things a little bit, especially that last piece changes things a little bit from where the conversation had gone with the working group, where there was consideration of potential condo ownership units. So to be included in the SHI, all units must be rental, as we just heard from the previous applicant about the Cross Street 40B. So really, we had, when we sent this out to boards and committees, it was really just intended to, very much to be what it was, which is a draft. So I hope everybody takes it in the context that it is and that we really wanted to get feedback from everyone as we move through the next few weeks in terms of developing the RFP further. I have a two, a couple other kind of business items for the, for the board about this property, but Susan, do you want to do the comments first and then we can move back to those two items?
Yeah, I think that makes sense.
Okay, sounds good. So yeah, I think John Serbier is here from the Housing Partnership Board, Diab Jerius from the Planning Board, Megan Blackwell from FinCom, and I believe that either Julie Reamer-Snyder or David Storyguard is here from Design Review Committee. So those are the four groups that have provided comments.
Okay.
I'm not sure who you want to take first.
Maybe we could start with John Serbier. I think he got his comments in first, so.
Okay, thank you. I will comment on just four of the conclusions and recommendations of the Housing Partnership Board that were contained in the four page memorandum that we submitted. First, members are not sure that the project described in the draft RFP is financially feasible. And by that, I mean, if a developer agrees to reimburse the town for the full 5.27 million land acquisition price, then it is likely not possible to also provide the desired mix of housing. Alternatively, if the currently defined housing objectives are fully met, then it may not be financially possible to reimburse the town for the full land acquisition price in a, in a timely manner. The second point, as a result of that observation, we recommend that a professional experienced in the conduct of financial feasibility analyses be utilized in developing revisions to the RFP's current evaluation criteria and then continue to assist the town in evaluating the submitted proposals. Next, if the desire is to have high quality creative responses, we also suggest not trying to release the RFP by the end of January and to complete negotiations with a selected developer in time for spring town meeting. Don't rush and brief, this project is too important. Aim instead for fall town meeting. And finally, a consequence of the town meeting vote, that all of the housing units be counted in the town's subsidized housing inventory, as Beth stated, is that this makes it, well, Beth didn't state this. This makes it more difficult for a developer to reimburse the town for the full 5.27 million dollar acquisition cost. Since market rate condo units are not eligible to be included in the town's SHI, the only way to achieve the 100% requirement is that this is an all rental development. That was the point that Beth was making. Thus, upfront revenue associated with the sale of condo units will not be available. As a result, we encourage the select board to consider working cooperatively with supporters of last fall's town meeting vote to come up with an a, an amendment that could be considered as part of this spring's town meeting. So those are my four points that I will emphasize tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Any question? Okay, we're going to hold the question for the end. Thank you. And maybe we'll go to the planning board.
Thank you, Diab Jerius, Chair of the Planning Board. So the planning board met, and I'm glad John went first because we came to very much the same conclusions as did the Housing Partnership Board. We find that the, the current RFP doesn't really provide a clear path to a successful outcome, mainly because of the financial considerations that John has outlined. And one of the, one of the examples that we looked at was at the current River Street 40B project, where the land acquisition cost was very similar to the one at Washington and Swanton. And their break even point requires, I believe, around 147 units, which is substantially larger than any project which had previously been considered at the Washington and Swanton Street. So we're very concerned about that this would be feasible with a building or a structure which is appropriate for that site. The other thing that, that we came up with was the concept of, of getting value back to the town, not necessarily through direct financial payments like this. One of our board members, Kurt Spring, who is much more accomplished in this field than I am, suggested that there are multiple different ways. And one of them, he discussed, he said, "The town could agree to a cash payment at closing with a balance taken back as a seller note, payable over time at a modest interest in that rate." His point is that there are a number of different ways of getting money back from the developer for this project. And we felt that, that really there is, the RFP as written doesn't really encourage more innovative ways of returning value. And by the word value, we mean any sort of contribution back to the town. And we also recommend that we take this slowly to make sure that we get an RFP which comes out, which is actually going to be successful. And like I said, provides a, a, a really clear outline of how a developer could come up with a viable and successful project. Thank you.
Right, thank you. Who do we have next? Is Megan? Megan from Finance, Megan Blackwell, the Chair of Finance Committee.
Thanks, Susan. And first, I wanted to thank you all on behalf of FinCom for including us in the process, early in the process. We really appreciate the opportunity to, to review and to provide feedback. So the board met last week and identified a few financial items of feedback as well as non-financial items of feedback. And the first, which is probably our most important point was in order to achieve the financial goal of recovering the full purchase price, FinCom believed it was important to elevate the weighting of the purchase price in the evaluation criteria. So the current scoring includes 11 criteria besides price and the amount of affordable housing. For example, the design, the streetscape, the outdoor space, traffic, parking. And these other 11 criteria are more subjective and may be used to inflate the score of a proposal having a lower purchase price. So because the affordable housing piece is the minimum threshold and all proposals would have to meet that in order to get to the next round, we felt that elevating the purchase price weighting would be important. In addition, we thought that making the evaluation criterion for price a sliding scale would offer more gradations of the financial benefit to the town. So in the present draft RFP, there's a score of two if the proposal achieves the full price or zero if it doesn't, if it's less than full price. So if this could be a sliding scale, for example, a percentage of the purchase price or even a nonlinear scale that has different set points and different scorings that would better reflect the financial gain and benefit to the town. And echoing what Diab said, FinCom believed an expanded definition of financial benefits to the town would be helpful. Now, this was not unanimous on FinCom. Some thought it would muddy the evaluation, but others thought that including the price, the taxes for commercial, commercial taxes in addition to property taxes and any project funded public improvements would be helpful minus the cost of any estimated costs for street improvements or water and sewer. Now, the non-financial feedback FinCom had was thinking of water fields and for an overall process improvement. It was suggested to include draft LDA language in the RFP and make the sale contingent on a signed LDA. Now, this is a different process, but it was expressed that doing the extra work upfront and drafting the LDA would be beneficial because you would still have the pressure of competition. And that's an advantage for the town as opposed to waiting to negotiate the LDA after the, the procurement removes the town's leverage. It was also felt that providing a proposal scoring example would be helpful to illustrate the use of the weighting criteria. And then finally, it was felt that including a statement about the potential for hazardous waste on the site and the expectations on the developer, developer for reading, for remediation would be beneficial. Lastly, we had questions, maybe for town council or other boards. We weren't sure if it's permissible to exceed the purchase price of 5.27 million. If it is, then it would be beneficial to change the expectation to recover or to exceed the purchase price. Also, we wanted to confirm that the, the RFP as written met the Chapter 30B requirement of competition on price. And then lastly, we wondered if it's a priority for the town for this development to offer more than 25% affordable housing. So we, we noticed in the evaluation criteria that exceeding a certain minimum threshold was scored higher, but we weren't clear if that was an overall goal for the town or just meeting that 25% for which, at least at 80, if it's 80% of AMI, then all units would count. Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Megan. And is Julie or someone from Design Review in attendance?
It doesn't look like it.
It does not look like it. But we did get written comments.
Yes. Susan, before you get into any questions, I just wanted to mention, because Megan had just asked the question about including the LDA in the RFP. That is the current proposal and we do have Anderson Craig working on that currently, so that's our goal.
Okay, right. I mean, this is, there, there's no, we haven't discussed or really are, are not contemplating this, the ground lease, it's a sale. That's always been one of the differences between this and, and the prior one, so. So we'd like to open it up for, for questions from members of the board. I know we kind of just went through this pretty quickly. But we did have the written comments for people to digest. Since we have everybody here, I'm wondering if anybody has any questions for John or Diab or Megan? Really? This is unusual. Rich, do you have a question for anybody or?
So I don't necessarily have a question. I want to thank everyone for their written submissions. I poured over them over the weekend, you know, the 30 or so odd pages that we received. I guess my, my first question that I'll post to the group, which I've posted some staff, is, you know, I understand the town meeting vote concerning residential units. And I understand that this, you know, there's a potential here to have some mixed use potential with this project. I'm wondering if it would be advantageous to the developer and go towards recovering purchase price if we permitted the developer to be able to sell that commercial space and not make it rental space? And I didn't know if any of the boards or staff had any thoughts on that. that commercial space and not make it rental space. And I didn't know if any of the boards or staff had any thoughts on that.
I'm not sure I understand, and maybe it's just.
I can.
To sell the.
So we, I mean, the town meeting vote was concerning residential.
Yeah.
Units. There's a component of commercial space, you know, I think that the neighborhood and past RFPs have talked about in concept plans. And I'm wondering if if we made that commercial space available for sale by the developer, if that would go towards recovering some of the purchase price that the town put forth, if that would aid in that process.
All right, now I do understand. Thank you. Brian, did you have something to?
Yeah, I, the the short answer is I'm not sure.
Yeah.
But I wanted to say that generally, so the the pro forma the DHCD looks at is only the housing. That they don't, they don't look or necessarily care about that commercial piece. But there's obviously this link between potential money that you're getting from the project, quote, is the project. But generally, DHCD does not review anything related to the pro forma of the commercial portion of any mixed-use project. So I think that's an opportunity to essentially almost negotiate with DHCD about, but that that's a, that's an opening that we can, that we can explore.
Okay, Diab, did you have?
Oh, yeah, I sort of vacillated there. One of the concerns that we had at the planning board was whether a commercial makes sense in terms of getting money back from this project, just because it takes away residential units. And it is a commercial space now, and I know the neighborhood wants it to be a commercial space. I think it'll be interesting to see if any of the of the respondents keep it as commercial space, given the really strict financial constraints. But that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Great. Mike, any, any questions or thoughts?
No, not really. Thanks, Susan. I mean, I definitely appreciate all the really well-thought-out feedback that we received from stakeholders. You know, I think the elephant in the room here is this amendment that was put in at Fall Town Meeting that is very well-intentioned, but I think actually is going to force us to thread the needle a little bit too much to get the really desirable project there. So that that's my concern. I mean, we, we want to make sure that we have enough developers that are accessing this project and are engaging with us on it creatively, rather than saying, no, that's, that's too difficult. I'm going to walk away from this one. And so I think that's kind of where we're at now. And I'd like to see us maximize the affordability of units there, not not so much, you know, focus on the the commercial side of things. When we looked at the the mixed use there, I think it was going to be kind of some street-level retail. But square footage-wise, really minimal relative to the the overall project. So that that would be my only comment regarding that. So, thank you.
Yeah.
And just to be clear, when I'm talking about commercial spaces, and I do mean the the street level where my understanding is we can't put units on the first floor in that, in that situation. So it would be kind of dead space. So I thought, you know, one way that we may be able to potentially gain money would be to to allow a developer to sell that. Just an idea.
Yeah.
So if I can comment, I don't think there's anything on the RFP that prevents developer from presenting an option that is mixed-use, right, with with commercial, that they would rent that commercial. But you know, I agree with the previous speakers that I think it's going to be tough for anybody to make that work with the constraints of of placed, especially on the on the financial side, given that rental residential will give them a higher return than than commercial. I also, you know, I want to thank everybody who wrote in. I read all of the comments. I do want to mention also what Mike said that, you know, we should focus on on providing affordable housing for people and, right? And not just SHI, right? We talk a lot about the units counting for SHI, but just because 100% of the units count for SHI doesn't mean that 100% of the units are affordable, right? It's still only 25. If it's only 25%, it's only 25% of the units that can house people who would otherwise not be able to afford to live in town. And so I think it's important that we try to maximize that, if possible. The constraints put by the by the amendment at town meeting are what they are, but I hope that we can, I hope that we can get some, some responses that that we'll be able to do that.
John, I see your hand, but I also see that Marty Jones has her hand raised, and she's on both the Housing Partnership Board and the the town's Affordable Housing Trust. So I'd like to, before the conversation moves anymore, I just wanted to elevate her and because I'm sure she has something available to add. She's been doing this for many, many years. Hi, Marty.
Hi, everybody. I thank you so much for allowing me to speak. I'm Marty Jones. I'm a member of the Housing Partnership Board and the Chair of the Affordable Housing Trust. I do want to echo what several people have said about my concerns about the financial viability of the proposal, the RFP as structured. If the town really does want to maximize as much of the purchase price, getting back as much of the purchase price, I think that we really need to spend some time understanding what kind of purchase price we might get from various levels of affordable housing that people might propose. And as currently proposed, I think it would be very confusing to a developer to figure out how to thread this needle with a town meeting vote that says everything has to be on the SHI, but the town's saying they want their money back. It's, it's very confusing. So I think it would be time and money well spent for the town to get some input on land valuation. And frankly, in my experience, the fastest way to do that is probably from a commercial brokerage firm that has experience in mixed-income housing and land sales and valuations that might be able to provide the town, you know, kind of a quick idea of what range of prices might be available on different levels of affordability. And I think as an advocate for affordable housing, I would also love to see this development include affordable housing for a deeper level of affordability than 80% of median income. But I think the town on a policy level has got to get to consensus on that about what's ranked in what way before we send out an RFP, because otherwise we'll just be all over the board. And I think it will be very hard for developers to figure out. You know, developers want to propose something that's going to win. And if it's unclear to them, looking at the proposal, what the town wants, then they're going to be confused as to what to propose. So I think it's a good start. And there are a lot of comments tonight, and I think it's worth spending some time digging into the finances. And I think if we need to go back to Springtown Meeting with a proposed change to that vote to get something that really will give the town the best price and the best level of affordability, that may be a strategy that the select board should consider. Thank you.
Marty, can I just ask, because I'm sitting here thinking, well, we did an appraisal. But the appraisal was more for the purpose of understanding what fair market value would be for the eminent domain process. So it's high. It's it's based on, I forget the magic phrase, highest and best use, which means the most profitable, the most, you know, something that generates the most, the greatest financial return. And we, you know, sort of know intuitively that that's why there's so little affordable housing, that everyone wants to make, you know, the highest possible return on their land and on their development. And that appraisal isn't really helping us understand what can be built in terms of affordable housing, what what an affordable housing developer can can put there. So it, you know, is that why you're recommending or suggesting, suggesting a commercial brokerage firm? Look at this.
I think that's part of the confusion, frankly, because I think a lot of people are forgetting that the price that we had to pay under eminent domain was the highest and best-use price. And I haven't seen the land, the appraisal that was done, but I'm presuming that that appraisal did not require any affordable housing as part of it to get to that land price. So of course, when we added the affordable housing requirement, which we needed to do in order to be able to actually take it by eminent domain, then it's going to be difficult for the town to actually get that purchase price back.
Okay. Yeah, because that's, that's something I'm wrestling with. And I know, you know, people in the community are kind of wrestling with this as well. So, okay. Thank, that's, that's really helpful. Thank you. Unless anybody has a question for Marty or wants to just comment any further on that, I was going to go ahead and call on John.
Yeah, I just wanted to add two comments. On the Housing Part, I didn't cover this in my remarks to, to keep them short. The Housing Partnership Board also had some concerns as to the viability of the commercial space. And we recognize that the neighbors want it. It's popular. Everyone likes it. But you know, I think one of the things that we recommended in the, in the, in the memo is that not making the commercial space a requirement, but leaving it optional or encouraging it kind of, kind of softening that requirement a little bit, because we're not sure, we think that actually is one of the issues that concerns us in having financial viability. The other point I just wanted to make, and we've kind of hinted at it or touched at it, is that, and Marty covered this as well. We think a lot of careful thought needs to go into the evaluation criteria, particularly on the the price criteria. We agree with the Finance Committee comments that 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 needs to be spread out. Right now, someone who submits a price of $4.7 million is given no advantage over someone who says, I'm not going to reimburse you for any of the purchase price. So I think a continuum of that is possible. And I think that the, the, the housing and the price need, criteria need to be looked at in combination to see what's, what's really going to make for a viable, for a development.
So I also had a question or something I would like to explore with Megan. And that was, in terms of the, I know the Finance Committee's role is to evaluate the financial implications or the financial aspects. And something that I'm, I'm wrestling with is that idea that that Diab introduced, or the Planning Board introduced, the idea of value that is a, something that is a value to the town that doesn't have a monetary value. And I'm wondering if you could just talk a little bit about, about how Finance Committee would approach that kind of a proposal, say. Trying to think of something that would be a valuable space for the town to have, or something useful that would benefit the community at that location that isn't, you know, even something that we're asking for in the RFP that some very creative developer would come up with. You know, how, how would you guys approach that, you think? How would your committee approach?
So what we discussed and what some FinCom members suggested still were in the financial realm. It was just broadening it past the the purchase price.
Okay.
So thinking of taxes, thinking of any project-funded improvements minus any estimated costs. So that's what we discussed. Now, what you're suggesting is is broader than that, and I think may be covered by some of the other evaluation criteria, such as open space and streetscaping and traffic considerations. So that, some of that might be built in. But beyond that, you would have to, I guess, elucidate what's important to the town and put a weighting criteria on that, other than the finance.
The thing that came to mind was the, you know, the it being a green building or something along those lines, you know. It would keep construction costs down for it to have, you know, gas, heat and hot water as opposed to electric.
Well, again.
Goals to have them, it'd be electric, and it might be cheaper. Again, it would be cheaper, but it would just be cheaper for the developer, not for the town, for, you know, the operating cost would be lower if you have highly efficient, highly efficient building.
Well, sorry.
I get what you're, I understand what you're telling me.
No, no, no. I was going to say that sustainability is also one of the evaluation criteria. So in a sense, that's already captured.
Okay. All right. That's helpful. Thank you. Diab, you have your hand up? You have another point?
Yeah, I just wanted to respond to that. One of the things that we have been talking about is some sort of, and Brian has done a lot more work on this, is some sort of local transportation. So some sort of a local shuttle. And so one of the things they might be able to provide is annual funding for something like that. So that wouldn't come directly to the town in terms of payment off of the law or the purchase price, but it would provide a separate value, which if we didn't have, say, all of the larger developments tied into this program, it might not work. And Brian's been looking into this. He's, so that's something that he knows much more about. That's one, one example. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. So Beth, I guess we're definitely going to take all this under consideration and hear from more folks on Wednesday. Is there anything else we should be covering here?
Not with respect to the RFP. I did have a couple other items related to this property.
Okay.
For the board's consideration.
Okay.
Let me just pull up my memo here.
Well, Beth's doing that. Can I just ask, what is the next step? We've got some great feedback from these boards in writing. We've had, we heard tonight, we'll hear from the public on Wednesday. I'm just curious, where do we go? Next?
Yeah.
Condensing all this into
Right.
work in the RFP.
So I actually think the timeline piece is probably the most critical part of the board's conversation. So we had originally, obviously, we had the meeting this evening. We have the public information meeting scheduled for Wednesday night, and I'm sure we'll get a lot of good feedback from the neighbors at that point as well. We had originally been targeting the January 31 date to issue the RFP, and that was released because we were trying to get this out and move things along as quickly as possible. If we are considering pushing this off to Fall Time Meeting, or even if you're considering going back at Springtime Meeting and maybe asking for some changes to that vote that was taken at Fall Time Meeting, we really need to reconsider that whole kind of timeline. The only next regular meeting for the board would be January 24th before the 31st, if we were trying to keep that date. So that would really require staff to, you know, be able to finalize a draft RFP between now and a meeting on the 24th for you to be able to to vote on it. So I think the timeline piece is the most critical part in this next part of the conversation in terms of how quickly we want to try to get something, you know, put together for your, for your vote before we issue it.
Right. So we, you know, wanted a very strict timeline and move quickly because we want to minimize the amount of carrying costs that the town is absorbing. But I don't think putting out an RFP that maybe no one will actually answer or that could just be very confusing to potential developers is is going to help us get through this any quicker. It's, you know, it could fail. So.
The other piece of the timeline is just deciding how long you want to have the RFP out in the street. For our original timeline, we made it an assumption about 30 days, and we were trying to kind of look at a springtime meeting date, I think, based on our conversations with J M, Jennifer Goldson, and some other folks, that 30 days is really just not realistic, and that 60 days would give us a much better opportunity in terms of developers being able to put together a package and respond to us for a more competitive response.
Yeah, I mean, we have been saying that this is different than water fields. But. But it's also different from Waterfield in the sense that we did not do or not doing a request for proposals first. We're not really giving people much of an opportunity, potential developers, much of an opportunity to learn about the parcel and what we're, you know, what our expectations are or what we're looking for before the RFP goes out. So that's another reason for thinking that springtime meeting is a little ambitious. And also thinking that the 30-day period for them to come back with proposals is maybe a little too short as well. I'm gonna have to look at my my other part of the screen to see if anybody, anybody has any thoughts about what a better timeline would be? And do we really, do we want to take seriously the fact that we, you know, could use a lot, make this a whole lot better if we had more time and put this off until, shoot for, you know, fall town meeting rather than springtown meeting? Or having, as Beth said, springtown meeting, you know, putting some kind of warrant article on for spring about changing the 100% of the units being on the SHI requirement or some other, you know, making that a little more flexible so we can have a project that's, that's financeable? Anybody have any thoughts?
My guess is hand raise, Susan.
Oh, thanks. Mike, go ahead.
Thanks, Susan. Yeah, I mean, I think it makes sense to wait. I don't really think between springtown meeting and fall time meeting, there's really that much time. And I think it's still even aggressive for us to go for an amendment at town meeting and then get to get an RFP out and get it back for fall. So I would be in favor of that effort. And if town meeting says to us, "We want to keep this amendment in place and move forward realizing that expectations on the return of the price and the viability of the project might be different." Well, the town meeting needs to say that. I don't, I just don't think that there was a real understanding of the impact of that amendment there. And so for us to move forward with it, I think it's really counter to our strategy and what town meeting was really looking towards. So, and when we first were looking at this proposal back in fall of last year, we were really focused on passing through the property to a developer with the, to get, to maximize our SHI to stay in safe harbor, right? So now that that ship has sailed, I think it really makes sense for us to get the right project, get the right resources applied to it and move forward with an amendment at the springtown meeting. And then in the fall, come back. The other issue is that I think it's a board's priority to move forward with the Waterfield project. And I can't see us bringing both highly complicated, you know, land deals to springtown meeting with a lot of other, you know, articles that we've got already teed up. So, you know, it'll be like, you know, a two-month, you know, town meeting, you know. So, and we'll end up probably close to the fall anyway. So we might as well just, you know, I think, take a little pause, focus on Waterfield and focus on an amendment going into fall time meeting. So, thank you.
So I guess it would be helpful to get a sense of the board if that's, and maybe you don't decide it tonight, but bring it back to the meeting on the 24th. You know, if we want to shoot for issuing the RFP, you know, in the next few weeks, then we have a lot of work to do. If you want to take a pause and try to go back to town meeting with a change, then obviously that would, we wouldn't do anything with our RFP on hold for now until we made that action. So it'd be something you want to put off for additional discussion on the 24th. And we would, you know, have a meeting on the 12th and really kind of just go on pause for now between now and your next meeting before we take the next step.
I have a sense that everyone wants to think about it a little bit more. Is that fair?
I mean, my concern is obviously, I don't want us to rush into a project that is not the right thing. But at the same time, I'm concerned about the current costs of, you know, going across the to the next fiscal year before we even get in front of town meeting. I know for Waterfield, we did, we did two steps where we did an RFQ and then an RFP. So if we were to postpone the RFP, maybe we could do an RFQ to see what kind of interest there is from developers. That way we can speed up the RFP later. If that's what, if we're thinking of, if we're thinking of postponing it, I don't want us to pause. I want us to keep moving and make the process later be more efficient and faster and maybe get better results.
All right. Go ahead, Rich.
I tend to agree with Mariano. I like to keep this moving and I understand and appreciate everyone's comments. You know, I think, I think the timeline was aggressive to begin with and, you know, I don't, but at the same time, there's a lot of time. Because, you know, to Mike's point, I mean, I think there, I mean, we'll lose a lot of time between a spring and fall town meeting. So I don't know, maybe if it's a special town meeting in June or something. But I mean, I think, you know, I think we can get this done. I just think, you know, I hate to see us just have dead time and hit the pause button while we're carrying the property.
Yeah.
I think the first important decision point is whether or not you want to go to springtime meeting with an amendment and that will dictate the entire kind of strategy we take from here on out. So I don't necessarily need to agree, decide on that tonight, but that's kind of our next key point.
And who's advising us on? I mean, I get, you know, and I appreciate everyone's comments. They seem, you know, based on, you know, the planning board's experience with River Street and anecdotally. But is there somebody that's going to advise the town? I mean, on that, you know, that it's more advantageous to go that way? I mean, or is it just coming anecdotally from, you know, talking to developers or just past experience with different projects?
So I think all the feedback so far has been anecdotal. We could certainly look towards bringing kind of a financial consultant on board to help us through that if it would be helpful. We can look at having a new appraisal done based on, you know, what, affordable housing development. So there's a couple of different options we could pursue.
So maybe staff could kind of digest this a little bit and give us some options. Not that I have that long an experience serving on the select board, but I have the sense that when you're kind of stuck like this, you probably need a consultant of some kind.
Yeah, and we certainly have Jennifer Goldson on board. So, you know, she has a lot of experience in doing these types of developments. We have her under contract currently, so we can start having this conversation with her as well.
I don't know who had their hand up first. Mike, go ahead.
Oh, thanks, Susan. If John or Diab wanted to, that's fine. I've already said enough. Thanks.
Okay. All right. Go ahead, John.
Okay. I just, I want to make sure that when the Housing Partnership Board recommended not rushing to springtown meeting, we were not recommending the word pause. And we would encourage the select board and everyone else to continue working at this on a steady and systematic manner. We just think it's gonna, you know, if you continue working at a good clip, a good pace, it's, it's gonna take to the fall. And so that's the point I want to emphasize. So don't, don't stop and not do anything because then you may not even make the fall town meeting. And I think it's going to take a fair effort to, to get an updated RFP in place. I shuddered when Beth said she was going to bring a, originally thinking of bringing a final RFP to the select board for a vote in two weeks. Because I think this, to rework the RFP the way that we described or suggested in our comments, just isn't going to happen in two weeks.
Okay. All right. I was gonna say, let's move on. Mike, you raised your hand.
I did. Sorry. Last comment. I lied. I said I wasn't going to say anything else. But just quickly, and I do think that we could potentially bring this, as Rich mentioned, to a special town meeting in June. And I think it would make sense for a complicated issue like this if we went for the amendment maybe in the spring and then brought this for a special in June or so. So I think there's, you know, we have the ability to do that and it would be, you know, it wouldn't be a multi-day thing. It would probably be just one night of town meetings. So I think we have the capacity to really make that happen. And I, and I agree with John and I'm sorry if I did use the word pause. I don't, I think that we keep chugging along as we're, as we're doing and maintain our commitment to the, a really strong RFP and getting the best project moving forward.
Okay. All right. So, so thank you, everybody. Diab and Megan and whoever else is still here, John and Brian, of course. And I think, you know, I think we'll be in a better position on Wednesday night or on the 24th to really decide what we want to do.
Susan, I just had a couple other issues related to Washington.
I wasn't sure. Go ahead.
So just kind of going back to the securing of the site. So the town did, we didn't record the, registered, recorded the order of taking at the registered deeds on December 17th, which gave the town full ownership of the property. And then our DPW, police and fire did an excellent job very quickly that afternoon of immediately securing the buildings in over the next few days. The payment was issued on January 3rd and picked up by a representative of the owners the next day. So that that piece is all set and kind of squared away in terms of requirements there. The board did ask us to get an idea of a couple of different ways to secure the property. So first, DPW got a quote to temporarily fence the property with an eight-foot-high construction fence. So kind of be what you see around a typical building development, not screened. The idea that would just be a regular chain link fence so that you could see into the property for security reasons. The rental price is $9,000 for the first six months with a monthly rate of $1,700 per month thereafter. So if that's the direction that the board is interested in going, we would need some funding from the affordable, excuse me, the boards, the select board, Affordable Housing Funds. And the other piece is we asked our consultant BHB to look at what it might cost to demolish the building. So the first step in that process, if that's the direction we wanted to go, would be to have them do a pre-demolition hazardous building material survey. The cost of that work would be $17,000. And that's like I said, just the first step. And then we would use that information to determine what it would cost to demolish the building and dispose of any construction debris, including any kind of hazardous materials or other items that are found during the building survey. So those are the two pieces I just wanted to bring to the board in terms of if we wanted to take any additional action. Our police and fire and our DPW are continuing to check those buildings. You know, police does kind of a regular round and we did secure it in other ways. So these are just kind of options if you are so interested in moving forward with either of them.
I think they both sound like reasonable things to do.
Yeah, I would only go forward with the hazardous building material survey if you really felt like we wanted the town to demolish the buildings, which, you know, if we don't feel like we want to head in that direction, then I think we're better served not, not spending that money. But if you really felt like that was the direction we wanted to go, then this is the first step required to do that.
I see.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I'm not sure that's a viable option at this point, given the unknown about demolishing the building and what we would have to remove for hazardous material, given the history of the building, so, and the age of the building. So, I mean, I would be inclined to put the fence up.
Yeah.
To secure the structure, but I'm not sure if I'm at the point where we would need to do that study.
Okay. Anybody else?
I really don't know. I mean, it does seem like a lot of money. But, you know, I think, you know, we're still investing in the project if we do it, you know, rather than, you know, investing in a fence. But I could go either way. I'm not sure if there's a staff recommendation here that could kind of lead us in some direction. But.
Yeah, I mean, I would say unless we are very serious, that we would take the buildings down before we sell the property, that there's really no reason for us to do that building. And, you know, we don't have to decide on the fence right now. So if, you know, we can, we can kind of see, you know, how things go. If we decided, you know, over the next few months that we wanted to put the fence up, there's nothing that would stop us from doing it at a later time.
Yep, that sounds like maybe we need to think about this a little bit more also, this one. I would just say also that, you know, I live near the property and, I don't know, I felt a lot better when there were fences around it just in terms of people getting in there and being up to no good or mischief. And all those gleaming glass windows sitting out there also gives me a little uneasy. But so far, so good. We do want to, you know, marshal our funding and not spend on this property if we don't have to.
Yeah.
We want to rebuild it and sell it.
Not knowing our timeline that once we commit to a fence, we're gonna, you know, we're gonna keep wanting to have it out there. So maybe we should figure out kind of where we're headed before we commit to that carrying cost.
Okay.
Beth, for our meeting on the 24th, too, could we also get a projection on the carrying costs for us? Delaying the RFP from spring to fall, just to see what that is? I know that we did interfund borrowing on that. But, you know, there's, there will be, you know, some debt service there. So.
Yeah.
Just to see what we're talking about.
Yeah.
Yeah, thanks.
Okay, anything else? Okay. So transfer station fee? We put this on here because I believe, you know, in discussing the transfer station project and changing the fee structure, we did communicate out to residents that we were, consider some kind of interim fee or transition fee or some kind of lower than regular fee for folks who have been using the SMART program as a way to just be thrifty and save money. Because, you know, that transfer station fee for the whole year, the regular sticker, has gone up. And folks who are on the, the SMART program are making, you know, their annual cost is making a big leap. So since the town census and the permit application have gone out and people are getting those things and they're asking for some, you know, some relief, I think that we do need to kind of step up our efforts and get this, you know, formulate something. And I see that Jay Gill is here and Nick and Mian. So maybe some kind of staff recommendation could be developed in relatively short time. That would be the best. So Beth?
So.
Have you had any discussions of this?
We have, yeah. So just to give a little bit of background on what we currently have. So we currently have an income-based program that applies to anybody, not just SMART program users.
Okay.
Those, to qualify for that program, you must also qualify for fuel assistance. So that is processed through the Board of Health, not the clerk's office, like the rest of the transfer station permits are. And that reduces the fee to $30 per year. So I just want to make sure that everybody is aware and the general public is aware that that is an option for, for individuals and families to have some relief on their transfer station permits, fees, if that's an issue for folks financially. So that's the first piece. And then the second piece is just kind of reviewing where we were, where we are with the SMART program. So we had just around 1,450 SMART permits in 2021. Those permits were $70 for the permit and then an additional bag fee. So bags were, and Nick and Leanne, Jay, correct me here if I'm wrong, because you're the experts, not me, but bags were $2 for a large bag and $1 for a small bag. So I believe there's probably some discount if you bought them in a roll as well. I'm not exactly sure what that worked out to, but.
Actually, it's no discount. Yes, $10 for a roll of 10, small, and 20 for a roll of 10, large.
Great, thanks, Leanne. So just to make sure, you know, I'm as sure already was that the permit fee was just one piece of what SMART program users were paying. There's also the additional piece for bags. So if somebody was using, you know, one large bag a week, that worked out to about $170 a year for their overall transfer station usage. So the one thing we did discuss is very briefly this afternoon was whether we could identify the former SMART program users who are an age group of over 65 and are in a single occupancy household. So those, those folks have a, I'd say, reduced, you know, reduced bringing of trash to the transfer station based on their household occupancy. So it's possible that we might be able to develop a limited program for this next year as we transition out of the SMART program as an option, if that's something the board was interested in. We need to do a little bit more work with the town clerk and the DPW to kind of figure out what that population looks like and identify those people. But if that's something the board's interested in, we can, we can do a little bit more research between now and the meeting on the 24th. I just want to mention that the census has already mailed with the transfer station renewal. So, you know, we're kind of planning on catching up here and trying to implement a new program pretty quickly.
And we want to have some idea of the impact of that, you know, on the revenue, right?
Right. So our recommendation is if we are going to implement a program, that it would be a reduction of $100 from the regular permit down to 170. So, you know, if there were 500 people fell into that category, we'd be losing approximately $50,000 in revenue from what we projected with the, with the elimination of the SMART program.
Okay.
I mean, I guess I'll be the bad guy. I mean, if, we're basically charging people, you know, at a minimum, probably $100 more a year now. I mean, based on best, you know, if you use one large bag per week in the SMART program. And you're getting a brand-new transfer station. And we've already sent out the census for this year. I mean, I understand people's concerns. Maybe it's something we explore, expanding that, the income program to include, you know, different criteria in the future. Or maybe you make two payments, if the 270 is a hardship for people. But, you know, I just, I think, you know, the idea when we voted on this months ago at this point was to be able to, you know, support the project and support, you know, you know, updating the transfer station. And I'm not sure, you know, how we're back in this position now. That's just my two cents.
I can jump in here, Susan, but I wanted to add this to the agenda. I don't think that we're back in a position. I think this is just something that went unresolved that we raised as a significant concern at the very beginning. So it was, you know, easy for us to move forward with all the raising of the fees and putting the project forward and building a nice new transfer station. But the reality is for a lot of our residents, it is an economic burden on them. So, and it's a service that we've committed to providing to the community. So I think what we're looking for here is a, you know, a transition sticker fee, which makes sense. And I think it's not a huge impact relative to the, the project that we're, we're doing there, which is a much-needed upgrade. But still, you know, I think we owe it to our residents to provide trash service at a reasonable price. The SMART program, you know, has been not really productive for us for, for a few years. And that essentially meant subsidizing that SMART program with the regular sticker fee, right? So that's, that's really how it, how it worked at the end of the day. Hoping that the policy objective of reducing the recycling or increasing recycling and reducing that, that solid waste cost to the town would be beneficial. So now we know the market shifts, that doesn't really work that way anymore. But as Susan said, or Beth at the outset, a lot of residents weren't necessarily participating in SMART because of a ideological strategy. It was, it was more of an economic strategy. So I think we really kind of flipped this program very quickly. I think we've been looking at it a long time. I don't think residents were prepared. So, you know, it's, it may seem like a significant one-time hit, but I think we owe it to residents to really have, have an off-ramp for, you know, for, for this sticker fee, at least to get used to it, which is, again, it's going to go up again next year, right? So that's, that's part of the plan, you know. We don't want to hide the ball here. This, this is the, the plan that the sticker fee is, is going up. So it seems reasonable to me to, to extend this to that universe of, of residents.
Oriano?
Yeah, I'm just not sure. I mean, the census has already gone out. A lot of people have mailed out or returned their, their permit fee. I'm sure that the town clerk's office is furiously working on, on printing out permits. And, and we already have a process for somebody, you know, if it's a, if it is an economic burden for somebody to apply for a reduced permit, that is what, $30 a year is what was mentioned?
Yeah.
So, I mean, I, I understand the, yeah, I'm just not sure that at this point it is necessary to, or really practical to, to do this.
Mike?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think that, you know, we, we approved this at the Fall Town Meeting and then the census had to be prepared pretty quickly and moved out. I mean, I'm guessing that residents that would apply for this, they, they, they would gladly either receive a refund or a credit towards next year or something. So I don't want the, the function of how we issue the stickers. I mean, it could be even something that we hand them a refund when they get their sticker at the transfer station. So we can be creative about getting money back to the residents or refunding them or in any way that we, we need to, if they've already sent it in. But I think we can also communicate to people that we are considering this. And I think it's, it's a, it's a fair objective for us. And I think in the long run, what's going to happen is we're going to deter people from using the transfer station services, right? Because it's not going to make sense for a single-family household to then, you know, pay this much. So I think that there are kind of bigger long-term risks here. And it's a, it's a really bad message, I think, for the board to be saying that it's functionally, it's a little bit too difficult for us to manage this reduced sticker fee as we're really investing in a lot of infrastructure improvements there for the long term. Especially people have been contributing for, for a long time to the town. So just my, just my perspective.
I mean, it seems to me that, you know, this is a limited number of people. And, you know, it sounds like staff has already started, to some extent, identifying how many people we're talking about. And it seems feasible to identify these folks.
We haven't really done anything other than have a very preliminary conversation this afternoon. It would take a little bit of work on the town clerk's part to, to merge kind of two databases they have with the SMART program information and the, the age and the occupancy information. So we would be, you know, probably to the 24th to be able to, to do that if you wanted to have an exact number of how many people would be impacted.
You know, I have to agree with Mike that this is kind of something that we communicated to people and we just didn't have the bandwidth to do, unfortunately. And I hate to have people get this message that we don't care or that we're, you know, yeah, I mean, we want people to support the transfer station. We want people to use the transfer station. And it just seems like being too hard-hearted here is not the message to convey.
So.
For the project. Go ahead, Jay.
At a chance, Jay Gill, how you doing?
I'm good. How are you?
I think we've got to be careful on doing this. I feel that the residents that get the sticker, that pay in the 270, if we're giving a discount only to the SMART people, you know, in that category, I think that's going to be a problem. Because I think there's residents in town that pay the full sticker that could have problems paying this bill. So I think we get very careful on just single out the residents that did the SMART program. That's my opinion. The other thing is, you know, in the next few weeks with Leanne and Nick, a few residents are going to try to find ways to gain more revenue. As you know, we were trying to get the transfer station to a, you know, almost to where we're, you know, making, you know, we're not, I think we're 200,000 to 300,000 below our budget. So we're looking to form a committee, as you know, to raise revenue. And here we are, taken away, which I'm all for. Someone, you know, a single, you know, household that's having problems or age or income. Do it water bills. We help people out. I think we should do it. Residents do have a problem paying this bill. I know we have 300 stickers sold already that are coming to the transfer station. So I think that's going to be a problem, that people that already bought these tickets, stickers. So these are the things you think about. That's my opinion, so.
Mike, one last time.
Thank you, Susan. I appreciate it. So, you know, I, I think that it might make sense for us to have a long-term program in place that it does evaluate income and everything from certain perspectives. I don't think that's where we're at with this one. And it, I, I think we've got to kind of move, move forward with some sort of fee. For, and the reason what we were looking at the SMART program is, as I said, I think that that was something that a lot of our single-household seniors, you know, were, were using as a cost-effective way to dispose of their trash. So I think a little bit of a landing pad for, for, for those households that, you know, during a difficult financial time anyway, it, it, it makes sense. And I think there's going to be plenty of opportunities for us to recover revenue. So, I, I don't know. It's, it seems like this is a natural part of the process where we're taking away a program that's been in place for, for a long time and had a lot of participants. And we kind of, we didn't phase it out. We just took it away. So I don't, I don't think we, we allowed a lot of preparation for that. So, and I think one of the reasons why we did that was because we wanted the revenue upfront right away, right? So we, rather than phasing, phasing out SMART over the next year, we cut it out now so we could get that revenue from the other residents. So I think we are going to, on balance, make out ahead here, even, even if we do give a little bit of a break to some of those households.
Well, I'm thinking that it just, plus the hour grows late. My, my sense of, it's just the general sense of everybody who's spoken is that this needs to be something that we develop with, you know, get a working group going, develop something. Or, you know, focusing on small households, single, single-person households and seniors and so forth. That would be something less than the full, the full freight of everybody else, but that would also be well thought out and, and, you know, implement it when we're not in the middle of sending the bills out and getting them back now. Thinking that, you know, we should let this be something that we really make a commitment to developing for next year. Nick? You have your hand up.
I just also wanted to point out that with the construction that we voted on, that we need the space as well. It wasn't that we're just looking for the money. It was for taking down the incinerator for stormwater improvements. That space is critical.
Okay. Good point.
Susan, maybe we can communicate better the, that we do have a program that if it is a third and somebody can apply for it. And then, you know, that will, you know, make it clear that we do have something if somebody is struggling with the, with the increase.
And how to apply for it and so forth.
Yeah, exactly.
I think the program is very limited, though. I mean, I don't think it really captures a lot of folks. And so that's, I mean, I don't know if somebody here can say how many residents are, you know, participate in that program where, you know, the, the fee is waived, but Mary Ellen, maybe, I don't know.
I think Leanne raised her hand.
Oh, Leanne, I'm sorry.
Mary Ellen has her hand up technically, but I know. Yeah, this is about 35, I think.
Yeah.
Yeah, very few. Okay.
Very few. But we do advertise it, folks, just so you're aware. The marketing pieces are in the 8,900 mailing that goes out every year. We market it on the website. We put it in the press. It is certainly a program that people are aware of. The difficulty we have in my experience as your clerk is folks are just a little shy about wanting to share their confidential financial information with the Board of Health in order to qualify. So there is a little bit of stigma attached to the way in which we require people to, to meet that threshold and to show us the paperwork. So perhaps that could be part of, of a review as well, is coming up with a program that would be more inclusive.
Good point. And maybe making more people aware of it through JENX as well. I mean, you're saying it's in the bill. It's in the census that this is.
It is. Yeah.
That would be the first place to put it, but I'm thinking maybe the target audience would also include, you know, also be looking for this kind of information from JENX.
Yeah, that's a good point, if we stick with the 65 and older.
Yeah.
I would just hope that for our next meeting, we could come back with some sort of solution here. I mean, it's disappointing when we move forward so aggressively with large capital projects that implo, that really impact residents and we're not able to apply a simple solution like this for some of our residents that are, are struggling. So this is a big impact. Our transfer station fees, I don't think that there is any other comparable community that's even close to where we are at. It's a big number. That comes with tax bills. That comes with water bills. It's expensive to live here and we want to encourage our residents to stay here. And this is a really disappointing message to send to our community. And it's a real, I feel it's a bait and switch. It's something that we talked about. It's something we promised. And my phone rings anytime anybody wants to get a big project going and work really hard. But when it's time to do something, I think that is small like this, I apologize for my tone, but it's really disappointing. So just for the record, I hope we can do, do better.
Okay. So, moving down the agenda, we have.
I just want to make sure I understand the direction. So are you looking for something for next meeting? Or are we looking for a longer-term solution that we implemented for the, the permit sold in calendar year 2022?
I don't know, Mike just, so I don't know. I don't know, Mike just, so I don't know.
I mean, it seems like Mike is the only one who wants something for the next meeting. So I would say the sense of the board is no. Is that we want something more long-term and something that, you know, that is not just reactive and knee-jerk, just after the permits already went out. And we do have a program for people, for somebody who it is a it is a burden. And if we can improve the process for people that, for whom it is a burden for them to apply, then we should do that. But I say an automatic program now after the permits went out, I think the sense of the board is no.
Thank you. Appreciate that clarification.
Yep, thank you.
I agree with Mariano.
And we do need to get moving with a working group. Add something for the next time, you know.
Can I respectfully ask that maybe the town clerk could be an ex-official on that working group? I do tend to, I administer the program, but I'm the last to know. And I'm trying to hope that perhaps you could include me on the front end, because my communication with the citizens is direct, you know, our office is front and center. We can really help mitigate some of these challenges that happen after the fact due to the sort of break in communication, if I can be so bold. Thank you.
Thanks for volunteering, Mary Ellen.
Thanks.
Pleasure. What do they say? Control the process, control the outcome.
Okay. We do have some appointments and a consent agenda, and then we need to go back into executive session.
Thanks, everybody.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you. I move that we reappoint Carrie Sue Barney and Stacy Arizari to the Affordable Housing Trust Committee for terms to expire April 30th, 2024.
I need a second?
A second, that.
Okay. Roll call vote, Rich.
Yes.
Mariano?
Yes.
I vote yes as well.
I move that we reappoint Adrian LeBeuf to the Design Review Committee, term to expire December 31st, 2024.
Second.
Roll call vote, Rich.
Yes.
Mariano?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well.
So before we vote on the consent agenda, I just wanted to say that it's very exciting to have the ENCA Fair back for approval on the agenda, and that hopefully it can happen on, what is it, that whole weekend, Saturday, the weekend of Saturday, May 21st. Hopefully, we can have the fair back.
Fingers crossed.
I agree as well. I was excited to see that.
With that, I move that we approve the consent agenda as printed.
Second.
Roll call vote, Rich.
Yes.
Mariano?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well.
I move that we adjourn our public session and we return to executive session. That we reopen the executive session that we previously recessed and that we do not return to public session after.
We adjourn from.
We adjourn from the executive session, yes.
I second that, and I just have a question. Do we use the old link?
Yes, just give me, just give me a couple minutes to start it up.
Okay.
Thanks, Patty.
Did we vote?
No, we didn't vote.
Okay, so Rich?
Yes.
Mariano?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay.
Two minutes.
Thank you.